Everybody, um, agenda notice this evening. We have two meetings this night. The first one is the Crime Control and Prevention District, in which we conclude that meeting with a move into the regular Jersey Village City Council meeting. So with that, I'm gonna open up the December seventeenth, two thousand and eighteen meeting of the Board of Directors for the Jersey Village Crime Control and Crime Control and Prevention District. Madam Secretary, quorum's present. Very good. Item B, Consider Approval of Minutes of the CCPD meeting held on August twentieth, two thousand and eighteen. Laura, any comments? Looking for a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve. Second.
There's been a motion, seconds, or any additional discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? No, that's in favor. Opposed and the abstentions, motion carries. Item C, Consider Resolution Number Two Zero One Eight-Dash-Zero Three, amending the two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen Crime Control and Prevention District's budget in the amount of three hundred and twelve thousand dollars, and authorizing the funding associated with the purchase and installation of automated license plate recognition camera system from the Crime Control and Prevention District Fund. Chief Eric Forrester.
Mayor, Council, Board members, bringing for you this evening expenditure requests three hundred and twelve thousand dollars for license plate reading cameras that we would like to place throughout the city. Several of you may have been on council or near council years ago, and we had talked about this. At that time, that expenditure was well over a million dollars. I think the lowest bid we had back then was a million-one. A large majority of that was wiring, cabling, and then the infrastructure to run it. Since then, we've revisited this, and you see before you the three hundred and twelve thousand dollar bid that we have with Flock. That brings us, we'll put forty-eight cameras throughout the city. This does not require any infrastructure on our part. This is housed off-site, maintained off-site, all, it's cellular, over battery, run through LTE, wireless, and we don't need server space or any of that stuff. We've, as long as we have computer access, we have the ability to get to it. I think it's a reasonable cost for what we need. It has, it's scalable. We can add or detract as we move forward. If, if the city grows, we can grow with it. If we think it's too much, we can scale down from here as well. I also put another summary in there from another agency that, or another company that you can look at as well, but program costs that we're bringing forward is three-twelve. The program costs that, for the other company, over the life of the three-term, three-year project would be five hundred and ten thousand. So it's substantial savings. And they do this through the different technology. One uses high-resolution cameras, and the other uses OCR, which is Optical Character Recognition, software to get it. We've demoed the, the equipment. We like it very much. It's a very small footprint. I would say a large majority of these will go on pre-existing signs that we already have in the city. You, you won't know they're there. They're that small. They're, they're barely recognizable, so I'm open for questions.
What's your maintenance plan?
My maintenance plan's included in here, but these are, these are pretty low maintenance. It basically consists of a solar, solar panel, a small battery, and a very, very, very tough camera.
Who will maintain them?
The company will, Flock. It's, it's included in the price.
Chief, if I, if I read it correctly, the annual maintenance is fifteen hundred dollars per camera. Is that, and then five hundred dollars a month for cellular connectivity? Is that, so it's, is that right?
That is correct. That's all included in the three-twelve.
So the annual is ninety-six thousand. Chief, what?
Annual's ninety-six thousand, and that's every year, then?
That's included in the three-twelve. We pay the one price, it's all paid for. Warranty, maintenance, installation, the cell service, and all.
Okay, so how many years?
That's three years.
So at the end of three years, then you're, you're gonna have the ninety-six thousand a year maintenance cost.
That's correct.
What do you do with all the information? You're gathering license plates. How does that aid you in your police work?
There are a couple of features that are unique to this, and that, that I think is very worthwhile, and one is the, the, the technology that's built into the software. It will alert us if they're, just say hypothetically, we set an alert for, for pedestrian traffic after midnight, and we have them back up in the village somewhere, and that's how a lot of our burglary and motor vehicles are happening. They're just walking by, checking doors. Well, it will alert us and say, camera XYZ one-two-three has pedestrian traffic at two AM, which is aberrant behavior, or at least un-normal, and we'll go check it out. The second is being able, just using your neighborhood as a, an example, say we have a burglary in your neighborhood, we can literally, within minutes, run every license plate that, that came through your neighborhood that day. We'll be able to eliminate your friends and neighbors within minutes, whereas before, we couldn't do that. There, there's some advantages to the software that's built in, and, and we think it's very advantageous for that.
One of the things that we've talked about over the course of many years was monitoring the parks, or monitoring Clark Henry, or Carol Fox. Can you in turn use these cameras for those, those applications as well?
One of the great things about solar over battery is we can move these to any location that we, that we desire. And that's, that's the big plus for us, is if we, we're in a non-fruitful area, we pick up the pole or move it to another pole, it literally takes minutes, a screwdriver, and you can move it.
Do you have live access to the camera feeds?
Yes, yes, we do. When, when they demoed the product, they came in, they put it on a pole, came to the office and said, here it is, it's live.
You said there's two methods, OCR and high-res?
Yes.
Okay, so which is this one?
This is OCR. This is Optical Character Recognition, using a, I wouldn't say a low-res camera, but a standard resolution camera.
What is the success rate with it?
I believe it to be better than the high-res camera.
So you wouldn't have any problem with court cases or anything, with poor recognition of numbers or anything?
No, sir. If, if we're relying on that for our probable cause, then we're in bad shape already. It's, it's just to guide us in the right direction. Really, that's what it's for. But that said, I was very pleased with the resolution of the, what we call stitched film that we see, before, during, and after shot. It's as, it's as good as any cameras that we have out now in seventeen-four, so I'm very pleased with it.
I'm just going on my experience with OCR and document imaging.
And Chief, there's a map here that indicates feature one and feature two. What's the difference between those on this camera location map?
I believe the feature two are dual camera, dual lanes. The, the feature ones are just one camera.
One question I do have, probably more for Leah. Is there, what's the basis for us not competitively bidding this out? It looks like this is, uh, being presented as a sole source, correct?
That is correct. We, we did get another quote, just to, to examine the, the quotes. The problem that we ran into with this type of, of system is because of the engineering involved, a lot of companies want, want you actually to pay for the engineering on the study, and we, we couldn't do that, so that's why we end up with a sole source.
Chief, how prevalent, I'm sorry?
So basically, what the chief is saying is the type of technology that it is, is not the type of technology that you have, the type of competition where you could do a competitive bid. Now, that is not necessarily subjective, but of course, open to interpretation. And so, you know, basically, if you wanted some more about the technical aspects of it that create that situation, you know, we'd have to provide that for you.
Uh, Chief, how prevalent are these cameras in Texas? Um, you know, how many cities in Texas similarly associated in size to us? What's their experience has been? Give us a little background on how these things have been used and how prevalent they are.
Um, they're becoming more and more prevalent. When we looked at them eight years ago and went down to Richmond and Rosenberg and looked at, at their park system, which is encompassed with cameras, and then we still felt it to be cost prohibitive. Right now, I believe you will see more and more people going this direction now that the cost has come down and the, the architecture's a little bit different. The company that, that, that we're bringing for you tonight's in the running for several cities here locally as well, and they've got cameras all over the United States, so it's, I'm, I'm not gonna say it's uber-prevalent, but if you look at the cost in relation to, uh, say, for instance, an FTE, a full-time employee, the expenditure's eighty-plus thousand a year, it, it quickly is, becomes a force multiplier quickly.
So you gave us the example of a situation in which there's a burglary in progress, and we've identified what time it took place, and we kind of scan around that timeframe of, of cars that went in and out. In addition to that, can, can you give us some, any more examples of how this technology might be used in our community?
Yes, and we, we also have a, a fair number of child custody issues within our village, where we have non-parental custodial issues. We can enter their license plate, and it tells us when they're in the city. We have suspected people suspected of crimes, we can put their license plate in there, it tells us when they're in the city. It lets us know when stolen cars are within the city, and there, there are many different applications, but the, the main ones that I like the most are the alerts that we can set up, that it tells us, hey, look over here, there's something going on in this particular location.
Do you see this also as a warrant enforcement tool as well, in which we identify license plates, we'll have open warrants, or something to that effect?
No, not, not really as much. It, it could be used for that, but we're not live with the NCIC on, on the machine itself.
Any other questions for Chief? All right, thank you, Chief. Looking for a motion on the resolution?
I move to approve Resolution Number Two Thousand Eighteen-Dash-Zero Three.
I'll second.
There's been a motion, seconds, or any additional discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed and the abstentions, motion carries. I'll actually adjourn our CCPD meeting this evening. Thank you very much, Directors. meeting of the Jersey Village City Council. Madam Secretary, quorum is present.
Yes.
Very good. Item B of our agenda this evening, indication and pledge of allegiance. Prayer and pledge by Councilmember Bobby Warren.
Lord, God of all creation, we give you thanks and praise for your presence and action in the world. As we come together this evening as a community, grant each of us the wisdom to understand your will and the work we do, and the decisions made here tonight. Help us to advance the common good of all in our city. Bless all who have gathered here tonight, and all of our neighbors who could not be here. Heavenly Father, send your Holy Spirit down upon all of our first responders and our troops, particularly those serving overseas. Protect all who serve this great nation. We pray that each returns safely to their families, and we pray for the repose of the souls of all of those who gave their lives to protect us. During this season of Advent, as we prepare to celebrate the birth of your Son, Jesus Christ, may we all know the peace of his presence in our lives. Praise and glory be yours, O Lord, now and forever. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Councilman. Item C, Presentations. Presentation of Employee of the Month. City Manager Austin Bleese.
Mayor, our Employee of the Month for December is unable to attend tonight.
Rescind the award. All right, moving to item D this evening, Citizens' Comments. Citizens who've signed a card and wish to speak at the City Council be heard at this time. In compliance to the Texts of Meetings Act, unless the subject matter of the comment is on the agenda, the city staff and city council members are prevented from discussing the subject, and may respond only to statements of factual information or existing policy. Citizens are limited to five minutes for their comments to City Council. First card I have is Mr. Harold Fleischhauer.
Thank you for allowing me to time to, on your agenda this evening. I'm Harold Fleischhauer. I live at one-five-seven-two-two Honolulu. In order to be brief and concise, I have placed my comments on hard copy. I want to share my concern with the city of Jersey Village regarding parking my RV on my property, on my driveway, by the side of my house. One substantial reason for moving here some nineteen years ago was that Jersey Village allowed me to park a recreational vehicle or watercraft on my driveway as I did in Spring Shadow Subdivision in Spring Branch. On June the first, two thousand and eighteen, I received a letter reminding me that beginning July the first, two thousand and nineteen, it will be a violation to do so. I have parked my RV on my driveway on my property since October two thousand and four. I mention that because parking my RV predates the ratification of the ordinance which reads Section fourteen-eighty-eight-six-A. Recreational vehicles shall not be parked or stored in front or side yards in zoning districts A, C, C-two, or D, except for temporary periods of time not exceeding seven days within a thirty-day period. In summary, this ordinance now makes it illegal for me to park my RV on my property. May I draw your attention to the United States Constitution? Article one, paragraph nine, one, which reads, Section nine, limits of Congress. No bill of attainor or ex post facto law shall be passed. This clause was prevalent and used for years prior to the writing of the Constitution. The framers of the Constitution inserted it into the Constitution because they understood the historical tendency of the government to excessive legal meddling in the lives of its citizens. Therefore, they found it prudent to include it in the Constitution. Ex post facto law simply means that an event becomes illegal with the new law, but was legal at the time of its passage. While Jersey Village Council can pass this ordinance for its current and future citizens of the city, they cannot be passed and applied to me because, in my case, it is an ex post facto law, because I parked my RV on my property when the law was enacted. The U.S. Constitution protects me from this Jersey Village ordinance, Section fourteen-eighty-eight. One might suggest that the ex post facto law were utilized more frequently for criminal situations rather than civil situations. But if I continue to park my RV on my property after July two thousand and nineteen, I will be in violation of this ordinance. Violating this ordinance will result, I'm sure, in a fine. Thus, this violation alters my right by criminalizing my action and imposing a punishment on me. And by definition, a crime is any act that violates a law which results in a punishment or payment of a fine. Thus, by definition, violating this ordinance is described as a criminal offense. Therefore, this ex post facto law is valid today even for parking a RV. Let it be simply understood that the Constitution is clear, sharp, precise, and concise, and that the federal government, as well as any city that exists under the Constitution, cannot pass an ex post facto law. Therefore, following the provisions of the Constitution, I can legally park my RV on my property, on my driveway, as I have for the last fourteen years. Granted, the JV Council graciously added a grandfather clause of ten years of grace for the then owners of RVs. Grandfather clauses are not part of the Constitution. Grandfather clauses came into existence after the Civil War, and primarily for providing voting rights, and to be sure, they put no time limits on voting rights. They still exist to this day. Ex post facto law is a timeless insertion. In fact, grandfather clauses can only recognize laws that are in agreement with the Constitution. This evening, I'm asking the Jersey Village Council to review the ordinance in light of the U.S. Constitution, and acknowledge that this ordinance, for me, is not applicable, since I was parking my RV on my property at the time of the enactment, and therefore, it is in fact, an ex post facto law, illegal according to the Constitution. As a result, in keeping with the Constitution, I am permitted to continue to park my RV on my property. A grandfather clause may be added to explain that the approval is granted only as long as I own the property.
Mr. Fleischhauer, it's time.
And that this property becomes subject to the ordinance as soon as, uh, becomes subject to the ordinance as soon as I sell my house.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. Uh, next card I have is John Baucham.
Hello, my name is John Baucham. I live at one-five-three-two-five Chichester Lane. First, I just want to say thank you to the Jersey Village Fire Department for the Santa delivery for my two-year-old daughter. It was actually on her birthday, and it was a really fantastic way with all of JV Fire Department, their volunteers and assistants truly went above and beyond to make sure the Santa delivery was a fantastic experience for my family, so thank you all very much. I wanted to speak a little bit about the automatic license plate reader cameras, which can serve a legitimate purpose for law enforcement when used as part of a comprehensive policing strategy. As mentioned, the cameras can be linked to a database containing information on individuals who might be subject to fines or arrests, which can notify law enforcement of hits on the database. The cameras typically capture the license plate, date, time, and location of the vehicle. While license plate readers are widely used by various law enforcement agencies and private, uh, private companies, we should be certain that safeguards are in place to protect the privacy of innocent citizens. There must also be strict oversight as to how data collected is shared with other local, county, state, federal agencies, as well as private companies. The tracking of people's location presents a significant invasion of privacy, which can be potentially, uh, which can potentially be used to reveal many details about a person. Just some questions that I had, which some of the council have already addressed, but some questions to keep in mind as you continue to think about oversight of this particular program. Uh, one, how will license plate readers be used other than investigating hits and information potentially relevant to an ongoing criminalist investigation? Second, how long will the data be stored? What, what would cause a plate to get flagged in the database? Assuming the plate is not flagged, how long will the data be stored? Will citizens have a way to know if their registered vehicle is contained in the database? Will this data be shared with any third parties? If the data is shared, will be there transparent process to know with whom the data has been shared? Will there be an annual public report on the camera usage program? And then, what are the expectations of success for the program by JVPD? And finally, many drivers avoiding law enforcement are known to use paper plates, stolen plates, or no plates. How will this program address the issue? And on note on that last question, the chief mentioned that that wasn't their primary intention for the cameras, the search for outstanding warrants, but that is something that they're frequently used for, so thank you.
Thank you, John. Next one is Mary Lee Beasley.
To whom it may concern, my name is Mary Lee Beasley. I am presenting my concerns tonight to the mayor and city council. My first concern is related to flooding. After the meeting this past Thursday night with the mayor and the project engineer with the Harris County Flood Control District, I left with the impression that there are many things that the city of Jersey Village must do to fix flooding. After listening to the mayor and the project engineer discuss the situation, I am now convinced that Jersey Village has not done everything it should and could have done to this point. I am concerned that the property, which was recently purchased, Jersey Crossing, is also prone to flooding. Also, it seems most flooding started after the tollway was put in. I also pointed out to everyone present that when we, when we receive grants from the government, we are receiving money from us. We are the taxpayers. There is no free money from the sky raining down. The Harris County Flood Control District has been collecting taxes for decades, as I understand it. The city of Jersey Village has been collecting money for a long time, too. Why do we need to raise taxes to pay for flood mitigation projects? Wasn't there already money collected for that? Wouldn't it be better to revise our budget and become more fiscally responsible like we all must do with our family budgets? I am from a time when if you don't have the money, you don't buy things you don't need, like dog parks and golf course convention centers. I would also like to comment on the recent discussion related to daytime curfews, which I was unaware that we had. I was very confused by the presentations by the chief of police regarding crime statistics. As a nurse, I have a bit of background in researching statistics. I never was quite sure of what he was trying to explain with either of his presentations. I am conflicted about this issue, as I can see merit in both sides. At this point, I would say that I favor not having a daytime curfew, because I don't think most kids are up to trouble. If they look like, like they are, where, where they aren't supposed to be, it would seem prudent that the JVPD find out what is going on, like the police and parents did when I was growing up. I also would like to suggest that I not receive so much help from two of your employees. Gordon Gibson sent me a letter about my trash cans. I find it incredulous that my trash cans, which are several car lengths up my new driveway, would be a problem. As I drive around Jersey Village, I see lots of garbage cans near garages in full or partial view. I also see couches, recliners, broken mirrors waiting by the curb for days. For a year, I've seen furniture on someone's front porch, and a trailer sitting in someone's driveway that was not grandfathered into the code, because I checked. I also would appreciate not receiving help with my political signs. Christian Summers came by one day and apparently knocked on the door and spoke with my husband, Bill, and told him the signs were too close to the curb. I am fairly certain they were several feet away. I noticed that down the street from me, someone had a veto sign about six or, six or seven inches from the curb. I believe that these incidents happened because after I heard so much discussion by unhappy citizens with Gordon Gibson and Christian Summers, I did a PIR for their complaint letters and for their personnel files. I am happy to report there were no complaints filed at the city, and their personnel, personnel files showed they seemed to be stellar employees. Is it possible that I'm being selected for targeting? Last month, I reported my findings of the election for a new council member on May fifth. Since I was so surprised by the outcome, I decided to do a mail-in ballot survey to a very large sample of mail-in ballot recipients. It turned out that three voters never applied for mail-in ballot, and someone voted for them. One of these voters is a neighbor of mine. I am concerned that we have an old-fashioned ballot box with a large slot in it. A poll watcher was in the count room the day of the election. She heard Paula Dillon, one of the election workers, shout out that the count was close. Paula had a very bad headache and left to go home at ten forty-three, which is not allowed since this is a small election and someone might go home, I'm sorry, might know what is going on and go home early, which the poll watcher was told she could not do. In addition to this, James Singleton was in the polling location on the day of the election, talking to the election judge. That is a Class C misdemeanor. All of these infractions and problems have been reported to the State of Texas Election Division. I also asked for James Singleton's personnel file, which I had trouble obtaining. I never was able to get the Internal Affairs Investigation Report I requested twice. I discovered he wasn't wearing a seatbelt while on duty, appears to have wrecked a car and hit a utility pole. I understand that in the military, he would probably be facing a court martial for not wearing his seatbelt. He went to the ER for evaluation for his arm, hand, and eye. I didn't see a detailed narrative in the file for why he wasn't wearing a seatbelt. He also was suspended for five days with no pay. I also mentioned last month it appeared that there were things missing from his file, so I was concerned that it appeared the file was sanitized. I suggest that the city of Jersey Village please ask the JVPD to not be so helpful to me, my family, or any of my friends. I want voters to have a clear understanding.
Mary Lee, it's time. Thank you, Mary Lee. The next card I have is, and I apologize if I pronounce the last name incorrect, but Roster, uh, excuse me, Robert Bonagovich?
Oh, I can't read my handwriting.
No, you're gonna have to help me out with this one.
Bonagirio.
There you go. Sorry, Mr. Bonagirio.
That's all right. That's all right. Thank you. Thanks for allowing me to speak. A couple of years ago, I saw, I saw a plan with the city for repairing streets. By the way, I live on fifteen-three-one-four Clevedon, right behind Mr. Warren, and we've had a spot on our street in Clevedon that's been patched several times, as a matter of fact, and it's fallen apart. Two, two neighbors have had flat tires because of it. Big chunks of concrete have fallen off. So I wonder, I got a question. I know I saw this, and my street was on, on the plan for- I know I saw this, and my street was on, on the plan for being redone. It's probably one of the oldest streets in the neighborhood as Mr. Warren Street is. Uh, is, is there a plan, is, in a budget, for redoing some of the streets?
Kevin, can you go ahead and respond to Mr.?
Acts of information.
Yeah, we currently have a, a plan, uh, that's been put together for the next budget cycle. Um, that's gonna be, we're gonna have meetings starting in January. Uh, that information's been turned into the city manager today for review, to pass out to council, so that they can be prepared for a budget briefing.
Okay, so, it, it would have to be approved first.
That's correct.
Right, okay. Well, there's a patch on my street that's atrocious. I, I really wish someone would come out and take a look at it. Thank you, on that topic. One other thing, uh, school buses, and I've called the Cyfair School District about this, speed like devils down these streets. My street in particular, in Clevedon, there's a bus route, and, uh, I'm glad the chief of police is here. I wish I had a radar gun. That guy's gotta be going 40 miles an hour, and there's no way he's gonna stop that bus. There's kids walking up and down the street, people walking their dogs. I'd just encourage the police maybe to come out between, the time between 3:00 and 4:00. It'd be, it'd really carry a lot of weight if one of these guys got a ticket, because I called the Cyfair School District at least three times with the bus number, et cetera, et cetera. We, oh, we'll do something about it. Nothing's ever happened. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. Uh, those are all the citizen comments that I have. With that, we'll move directly into the city manager's reports. City Manager Austin Blyce.
Mayor and councilors, um, the city manager's report is before you this evening. Um, two things I would like to add. Uh, one, this is our last meeting with our city attorney, uh, here tonight. She is, uh, taking a different position, and we're definitely going to miss her, but I want to make sure the council, uh, is aware of that. Um, and two, I believe the fire chief would, uh, like to say a few things about his new cadets.
Thank you, Austin. Mayor and council, it's not often we get to come to you and, and talk about some of our, our volunteers, but this is a historical year for us. We actually have seven new volunteers. One couldn't make it tonight, but before you have new volunteers, sometimes we lose one a year, but to have seven new ones in one year, that's, that's incredible, uh, and we wanted to introduce them tonight. So, uh, from left to right, we have Dominic Ponse. He's a firefighter, just finished the academy. Uh, Kimberly Jimenez, also firefighter, just finished the academy. Kelton Cash, also firefighter, just finished the academy. Jordan Ferrante, also firefighter, finished the academy. Brian Donahoe, also firefighter, just finished the academy. And Phil Campbell, just finished the EMT class, and they are all ready to go, get on the trucks, and roll to emergencies, so we're proud to have them.
Mayor, I have nothing else to add.
Thank you, city manager. Welcome, cadets. Thank you very much for your service. We look forward to having you here in the city, and thank you for your service. Absolutely. Welcome. Uh, any other questions for Austin from council? All right, move directly into consent agendas. Any member of the council wish to remove an item from the consent agenda, place it into the regular agenda? CNN, looking for a motion.
I make a motion to approve. Second.
There's been a motion, second, is there any additional discussion? CNN, all those in favor? Opposed, any abstentions, motion carries. Item G, regular agenda. Item one, Consider Resolution Number 2018-80, Appointing Members to Serve as Directors on the Tax and Increment Reinvestment Zone Board for the City of Jersey Village Tax and Increment Reinvestment Zone. Number 10, for the, number two, for the term to begin on January 1st, 2019, and to end December 31st. Uh, City Secretary Lori Cootie.
Yes, Mayor. Currently, there aren't any, uh, vacant positions on the board, but the term for office, for, of this office, I'm sorry, the terms for positions three, four, five, and seven will expire December 31. Uh, the new term is gonna be from January 1, 2019, and will end on December 31 of 2020. There are four new applicants on file that were included in the meeting packet. Um, and these are individuals who are interested in appointment, and, um, all of the incumbents, um, have requested, uh, to be considered for reappointment, except David Ambrose, who does not want reappointment, and since the posting of the agenda, Jeff Butler has indicated that he does not desire reappointment. So, we'll be, uh, appointing two positions tonight, well, all the positions tonight will be, I'm sorry, will be appointing for. Thanks.
Thank you, Lori. Okay, council, uh, open it up for discussion.
My recommendations would be for, uh, Drew Wasson and Sean Anger.
Um, I, I've looked at this, and, um, I was very happy to see Jennifer McCray's name come back up, and, uh, I've got lots of respect for Anger and Wasson, uh, but they're newer applicants, if memory serves me correctly, and Jennifer's been passed up for previous appointments, and so I would like to see Jennifer and Drew Wasson.
One thing I thought about, because I, I thought about that as well, um, one thing I noticed is on her application, she actually has applied for both planning and zoning and the TERS board, uh, whereas the other applicants only applied for the TERS board. Since Jeff Butler is, um, uh, he, he has resigned from both, uh, of those boards, there's gonna be an opening on both. Uh, it, it may be appropriate to consider, you know, uh, putting the two people who only selected TERS on TERS, and then the person who selected an indication that she would want to serve on either of the other, of, of the P and Z in TERS, maybe consider her next month when we look at that opening for that.
That was my thought process. I spoke with her today, and that, that'll work, we can do that.
Any other comment from council?
Well, is there, uh, Jeff's application, is that, do you have that, or was that included, or what's the?
Uh, I did, didn't include it, because tonight we're only, uh, doing the TERS board, not the P and Z.
I'm sorry, and Jeff Butler, uh?
He, he serves currently on the TERS board, and then he is sending in his resignation for TERS, and also he serves on the.
He resigned, I'm sorry. Okay, I apologize.
Okay, so I've heard, uh, from two council members of a slate of Wasson and Anger. I think I may have, uh, three council members. Do I have any, any other recommendations or comments for, uh, recommended nominees?
Well, it would have been that we, uh, with his appointment, we wanted to reappoint Sari Davies and James McDonald also.
So, your recommendation, council member, is reappoint Davies, reappoint McDonald, uh, replace Butler and Ambrose with Wasson and Anger, is that your recommendation?
Yes.
Mayor, I'll need to have on the two new ones, I'll need to have the numbers, the position numbers.
Uh, any other recommendations, comments, nominations? Okay, uh, I'm looking for a motion to approve the resolution, and in the motion, please, uh, list out the nominees and what position you are, uh, putting in in the resolution.
I'm gonna make a motion that we appoint Sari Davies to position three, with his term ending December 31, 2020. Sean Anger to position four, expiring December 31, 2020. James McDonald, position five, expiring December 31, 2020. And Sean Anger to position seven, expiring December 31, 2020, to the TERS board.
Did you have Anger at position four? I think you had Anger at position four, and you want to put Wasson at, to seven, is that, and?
Yes, Wasson at seven.
All right, so if I understand the motion correctly, council member, we have a motion to approve resolution with Davies at position three, Anger at position four, McDonald at position five, and Wasson at position seven. Is that your motion, as I understand it?
Yes, sir.
I'll second that.
There's been a motion, second, is there any additional discussion? CNN, all those in favor? Opposed, any abstentions, motion carries. Item two, Consider Ordinance Number 2018-28, Amending the Asset Forfeiture Fund Budget of the City for the fiscal year beginning October 1st, 2018, ending September 30th, 2019, and Authorizing Funding Associated with Interior Building Renovations to the Police Department, as permitted by Chapter 59 of the Code of Criminal Procedure and Providing for Severability, Chief Eric Forrester.
Mayor, council, I bring before you a budget amendment for $23,322 for three improvements to the Police Department, uh, new floor and dispatch, painting of the interior walls only, and a new desk in the, uh, patrol room. Computer workstations, when we have in there, was temporary eight years ago, it was supposed to be replaced and never got replaced. Now, it's falling apart. Uh, this is a required spend down of treasury funds. We only had three years to, to expend these funds, and we're up on the three years, so we need to get this spent ASAP. Thank you.
Any questions for chief? Okay, looking for motion on the ordinance.
I make a motion to approve ordinance number 2018-28.
I second.
There's been a motion, second, is there any additional discussion? CNN, all those in favor? Opposed, any abstentions, motion carries. Item three, Consider Ordinance Number 2018-29, Approving the Request of the Board Directors of Crime Control Prevention District to amend the 2008-2019 Crime Control Prevention District's budget, the amount of $312,000, authorizing the funding associated with the purchase installation of automated license plate recognition camera system from the Crime Control Prevention District, finoring the annual budget of the City of Jersey Village, Texas, for the fiscal year beginning October 1st, 2018, and ending September 30th, 2019, to reflect these changes. Chief Eric Forrester, once again.
Mayor, council, I bring before you the same item we had before on CCPD, the $312,000 for 48 cameras throughout the city. Would like to address, uh, the, uh, questions that were, uh, brought up earlier, uh, part of the public conversation. The data is only gonna be held for 30 days. Uh, we do not hold the data, it's held outside. There's no third-party sharing of the data, and no sharing of the data outside of JV. Uh, we don't maintain a database, per se, it's not tracking that. Uh, criteria for inclusion into the database or, or the alert system would be up to us in law enforcement. If we see or feel a need to put somebody in the alert system, we'll put them in there. If there are warrant, uh, risk, or there, uh, a risk to the community, we're gonna put them in the alert system. Um, and this is for, um, uh, law enforcement use only. That's it, and there's no sharing of the data. And, uh, CCPD, we, we ask that you approve the CCPD funds for $312,000.
Okay, any questions for chief?
Chief, I know, I know that in terms of sharing, that, that we certainly wouldn't share the information, but are there assurances on the part of the vendor that they're not, in turn, selling that information or sharing it as well?
Yes, there are only two people that have access to that data. It's us and them, and that's the assurances we have.
But, but as part of their policies, they, they've, they've, they're not sending it to third parties either?
That is correct.
Okay.
Council members, there's also several federal and state laws concerning law enforcement information that would make it a crime if they were to do so, uh, when they're not authorized to do so.
Chief, my reading of this contract is $120,000, but the maximum budget amount's $312,000. Am I missing something in the contract, or is there room for expansion?
No, that's the entire program amount. That's the installation plus the three years, so that's the, the entire amount.
Three years.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Any other questions for chief? Looking for a motion on the ordinance.
I move to approve ordinance number 2018-29.
I'll second.
There's been a motion, second, is there any additional discussion? CNN, all those in favor? Opposed, any abstentions, motion carries. Item four, Consider Resolution Number 2018-81, Authorizing the City Manager to Enter into a Contract with Flock Safety for the Purchase Installation of Automated License Plate Recognition Camera System. Chief Forrester.
Goodness, uh, bringing forward, uh, item three, uh, for approval for the city manager to sign the contract.
Chief, earlier we talked about these cameras going mostly on existing poles. The contract says all of the cameras are going in existing poles. We don't need any funds. Is the city gonna put up the pole if we need it?
Yeah, we, we, we've looked at that. We can move the camera within, these locations don't have to be specific. We can move 10 feet to another pole, or whatever the case may be. I foresee, uh, a small fee i- if we have to, to buy a couple of poles, but, uh, I don't think it's worthy putting, putting them in the contract now.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Looking for motion on the resolution?
Move to approve resolution, uh, resolution number 2018-81.
I'll second.
There's been a motion, second, is there any additional discussion? CNN, all those in favor? Opposed, any abstentions, motion carries. Item five, Consider Resolution Number 2018-82, Authorizing the City Manager to Enter into an Agreement, Brooks &amp; Sparks Incorporated, Form Engineering Services for the Repair and Painting of Ground Storage Tanks Located at Seattle and Village Water Plans. Kevin Hagerich.
City council adopted the 2018-19 Capital Improvement Plan, which included a project for the repair and painting of the ground storage tanks located at Seattle and Village. Currently, funds were approved for the fiscal year 2018-19. The first phase of the project is for engineering services to include basic services, acquisition of existing plant information, preparation for construction plans and specifications, and securing public bid for the project. This item is to approve a contract with Brooks &amp; Sparks for their services. My recommendation is to approve Resolution 2018-82, Authorizing the City Manager to Enter into an Agreement with Brooks &amp; Sparks. Any specific questions? Frank Brooks is here to answer them.
All right, any questions from council?
Uh, one, one question, and the proposal from Brooks &amp; Sparks, item two, Contract with Dunham Engineering, et cetera, is that included in the, in, in the 61? Yeah, okay. Most of the 61. There's most of the 61. I, I'm not an engineer, I have no engineer, uh, no experience with any of this, so I'm just gonna ask the question, 'cause I'm told there's no dumb question, but, uh, this is for $61,000 worth, and I'm looking at the services, and I'd just like to know how we get to $61,000 for what I'm reading here. The, uh, services from Dunham, they're experts in this type of, of, of operation. We have to meet AW, AWWA standards. They're gonna be, most of their work is gonna be during the, the, uh, application of the coatings and the sandblasting and so forth, and, uh, also the cathodic protection. So, what I'm doing is I'm putting together the contract documents that we bid normally in the city. Jimmy Dunham, or Jim Dunham's, uh, firm is gonna be over, they're gonna be specking the paint, uh, providing the thickness of coatings, whether it be primer, or, uh, top coat, or clear coat, and, um, and they're gonna be doing, they're gonna be out there all during the, uh, painting and construction. The basic.
Frank, could you also address, it's a lump sum, uh, amount of money, so, you know, if they spend 10 hours, or they spend 100 hours, you're not paying more than that lump sum amount.
So, they've got people on site while the work's going on, and you're paying for lab costs? That's correct. Okay. Yeah. I just want to point out also that, uh, James Dunham Engineering is who the city's used over the past 20 years to do this service. They do the elevated tanks, they do the inspections and so forth. Well, I trust who you're picking. I'll, I'll put together a good set of specs, too, so.
All right, any other questions for Frank or Kevin? Thanks, gentlemen, looking for a motion on the resolution.
Move to approve Resolution Number 2018-82.
I'll second.
There's been a motion, second, any additional discussion? CNN, all those in favor? Opposed, any abstentions, motion carries. Item six, Consider Ordinance Number 2018-30, Amending the Jersey Village Code of Ordinance as Chapter 2, Article 4, Division 2, Section 2-142B9, to amend the schedule of fees related to the flood pain, flood plane development permit, providing severability clause and providing a penalty as provided in Section 1-8 of the Code. Kevin Hagerich, Director of Public Works.
On November 19, 2018, city council approved amendments to the Code of Ordinance regarding the schedule fees. Since that approval, it has been discovered that additional charges are needed in accordance in connection with the flood plane development permit. This item is requested, uh, to make those necessary changes. Recommendation is to approve the ordinance, amending the Code, Chapter 2, Article 4, Division 2, Section 2-142, Parenthetical B, Parenthetical 9, to amend the schedule fees related to the flood plane development permit, providing a severance clause and providing a penalty as provided by Section 1.8 of the Code relating to the expiration of permits. Basically, it's administrative cleanup.
Any questions for Kevin or Christian? So, as I read this correctly, basically, the, when we had our discussion about, uh, change in fees, previous meeting or so ago, uh, we're looking to basically add language where in the flood, there's a flood plane development permit, the, the development permit fee should be 1% of the project valuation, or $250, whichever's less, so if, basically there's a permit in which the max out-of-pocket is 250 bucks, is that the understanding?
The maximum is 200.
The maximum is $250, correct, so that a high school addition doesn't get too excessive. So what we've ended up with is a $25 fence fee, by way of example, in the floodplain, or let's just take the floodway, where I meet with a homeowner three times to discuss how much flood venting they need, one square inch per square foot of area contained, is essentially 25 cents. So it needs to be based on the valuation of the project, so that was a staff oversight, a staff mistake.
Okay. Any questions for Christian or Kevin? Okay, looking for a motion on the ordinance.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number 2018-30.
Second.
There's been a motion, a second, is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, any abstentions, motion carries. Item seven, consider ordinance number 2018-31, amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of Jersey Village by amending Chapter 14, Building and Development, Article 1, in general, Section 14-5, definitions to conform with the National Flood Insurance Program Floodplain Management Regulations, providing for codification and renumbering of the revised sections, providing for severability, providing a penalty in amount not to exceed $2,000 for each day of violation of any provisions hereof. Kevin Hagerich, Director of Public Works.
Little background, the City of Jersey Village has chosen to participate in the National Flood Insurance Program Community Rating System. In order to be considered for any benefit of this program offers, the CRS program requires the definitions as outlined in Section 14-5, either mirror or exceed the NFIP Flood Management Regulations, as outlined in Title 44 of the Code of Federal Regulations, Part 59 and 60. This item is to request the necessary changes. Staff recommends to approve ordinance number 2018-31, amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of Jersey Village by amending Chapter 14, Building and Development, Article 1, in general, Section 14-5, definitions to conform to the NFIP Floodplain Management Regulations, providing for codification and renumbering of the revised sections, provided for severity, and providing a penalty in amount not to exceed $2,000 each day for violation of any provision.
So basically, this is just to bring our codes into compliance with NFIP, so we can participate in CRS programs, so Jersey Village flood insurance holders can get a discount on flood insurance, correct?
It's a step toward that, Councilman Mitchum. Yes, sir. It's the preferred nomenclature. You'll see additional text changes to Section 14, 221 through 227 of the Code of Ordinances at the next meeting. That has to do with flood damage and mitigation.
Why is there a severability and penalty part to this on a change in definitions?
I should probably let Kevin, or better yet, Lori speak to that. It wasn't really, or Leah speak to that. I'm so sorry, Leah. I was trying to give you a break on your last.
So basically, if you have a property owner who is not in compliance with any part of your ordinance, meaning the definitions only give you what each term means as you go throughout the regulatory part of the ordinance. So even though we're just doing the definitions this time, we still have to state that if you violate the whole chapter, you're going to receive a violation in a certain amount. Also, severability means that if, for some reason, one of these definitions has some problem, and may be unconstitutional for some reason, that doesn't throw out all the other definitions that we have changed.
And if I heard you correctly, Christian, so what we're doing tonight is nonsense definitions. However, you're going to come back to us with the actual language of the ordinance, to also, the actual practical application of the ordinance to follow and mirror the NFIP as well, right?
Yes, sir, I will. I'm actually about, I was about three hours from completing it and getting it on the agenda.
We can wait, we'll stick around about three hours.
Okay, well, between Lori and me, it was going to be like a UFC thing out in the corridor if I tried to get it on, so it was.
Any other questions for staff or Christian? Okay, looking for a motion on the ordinance.
Move to approve ordinance number 2018-31.
A second.
There's been a motion, a second, is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, any abstentions, motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. That'll actually take us into mayor and council comments, because we will have an executive session following council comments. I'll start at the end with Mr. Councilman Gary Wobenhorst.
Yeah, I just, I mean, we forewent the honoring the employee of the month, and I just have to say something about that employee and what he's done, and why he got honored. The Officer Holly took it, just took responsibility for a young man that was living on the streets, and started a fund collection, collected money for him, and also is instrumental in getting him a place to live, and going to job interviews, getting him cleaned up, finding some other employment, and I'm just hoping that he's rewarded for his efforts. But it's definitely a very humane thing he's done.
Merry Christmas, chief. Thanks for bringing all the volunteers. It's momentous to have seven, just amazing.
Yes, wanted to say thank you for all the people who are starting to step up in the community. Seven volunteers, that's fantastic. I love when we get applications in for different board positions, and it's difficult to pick because we have so many people that are starting to apply, and I really appreciate that. Merry Christmas to everybody, and Happy New Year.
Leah, thank you for your service to Jersey Village. Thank you for keeping the rest of these guys in line. I think we're going to have to break in a new city attorney, but thank you for your, thank you for your service. Chief, nice job. That was very impressive. It's a good-looking group of cadets, or actually firefighters, so congratulations on that. And Merry Christmas.
I just echo everyone else's comments. I think it speaks volumes of the character of our community, that we have so many people willing to step up and help when we really need it. So thank you to everyone who, in their own way, is chipping in and helping out, and I also want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
I need to start letting myself go first. Y'all steal all my fire and thunder. But no, I mean, to echo some of the comments, I know, gosh, some months ago, talking with Chief Bits, and during some of our city budget meetings, we discussed concerns about making sure we had enough volunteers, enough firefighters in Jersey Village, and how that's going to be an issue. I'm just so glad to see people step up. You know, chief, this shines well on your recruitment efforts. Thank you for what you've done. Congratulations to our new firefighters. Welcome to Jersey Village, so glad to have them here. We bring in new cadets, but yet we lose our city attorney at the same time. But nonetheless, thank you very much for all of your service to Jersey Village. Leah, thank you for your time helping us. Yeah, you were there for us during a city manager transition, that was extremely helpful to us on council, and with us during some important 380 agreements, helped us shepherd at some of the economic development we're doing, so thank you very much for your efforts. And I know that you're going to do a great job in Austin. I want to thank all the citizens who came out this past week for the flood meeting that was conducted between myself and Harris County. It was a great opportunity for us to visit with the residents, give everybody updates on our flood mitigation activities. I look forward to continue to do, continue to do that in the future, because as it says, the name implies, it is called the Long-Term Flood Mitigation Strategy, so this is a long-term project, and it will be continued council, staff, and community engagement as we go forward on that. Some of you guys may have walked in earlier, and we had an opportunity to visit with scout troop as well. I want to thank the scouts for coming in. That's one of the things that I really enjoy, and I often have Councilman Warren join me as well, as he's an Eagle Scout. It's a great opportunity for us to discuss what we do on council, and show these guys that public service can be cool, so hopefully they'll look into doing that. But nonetheless, thank you, staff, for all your work this year. We've got a lot of things going forward next year. I look forward to working with you guys on some of these exciting initiatives and opportunities. Thank you, residents, for your attendance. Thank you for your comments this evening, and I as well want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas. And with that, we'll move into executive session. City council is now going to retire to a closed session at 8:00 PM pursuant to the Texas Open Meetings Act, Section 551.071, consult with attorney, and Section 551.072, deliberation regarding real property in connection with the following item. Pursuant to Texas Open Meetings Act, Section 551.071, consult with attorney, and for Section 551.072, deliberation regarding real property, consult with the city attorney regarding cause number 1074704, Jones Road Project Limited versus City of Jersey Village, Texas, County Civil Court at Law III, Harris County, Texas. We'll return to open session and continue with a reminder of tonight's agenda after the closed session deliberations are concluded.
Okay, the closed session was adjourned at 8:30 PM, and no official action or vote was conducted during the closed session. We're not going to reconvene the regular session. Item one, discuss and take appropriate action concerning items discussed in the executive session regarding cause number 1074704, Jones Road Project Limited versus the City of Jersey Village, Texas, County Civil Court at Law Number 3, Harris County, Texas. Looking for any motions on this item this evening?
Mayor, I move to authorize the city manager to exercise the second agreement in the, or the second option in the option agreement executed as part of the settlement of cause number 1074704, Jones Road Project Limited versus City of Jersey Village, Texas, County Civil Court at Law Number 3, Harris County, Texas.
Second.
All right, there's been a motion, a second, any additional discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, any abstentions, motion carries. That will actually adjourn our meeting. Good night, everybody.